Hey, ready? I'd like to call this North Scott School Board meeting to order on all state team. Everybody let's join down there and say the political allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, looking for the approval of the agenda.
I'll move second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, comments and suggestions from citizens? Ready? Okay, if any of you that are watching online have any questions or comments, you can fill out the questions on the YouTube link or reach out to any of us or Mr. Steady. Consent agenda, looking for a motion.
I have one question. I guess it's for Jill. Can you tell, explain a little bit more about the all group agreement? I just read through it, but would like to know what.
Um, so the goal is just to find somebody to assist with filing the rebates for the solar panels that are up and running. Uh, the last time we did it, they did it on our behalf, and this would be the first time we did it.
That's what I thought, but my first time I saw.
What we're finding is it's a complicated project trying to get money out of the federal government. Right now Jill and I are working hard on the $2 million grant and that one. Uh, it's a company we've worked with on behalf of several other contractors for energy savings. And so Jill, they'll hopefully get us some of the money back.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any other questions about the consent agenda? Okay, all those in favor? No?
Oh, no, we don't see it.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Recognition.
All right, we had several state things here this summer. Baseball, second team all state, Carson Lay.
Gladys.
Gladie, thank you. Softball, first team all state, Adeline Johnson, third team all state, Really Schrader and Chevelle Kingsley. And, uh, class four alternate team, Adeline Johnson and Kamyla.
You do, Ellen did.
Yeah, and of course, the team itself was, uh, got the four. So, under that great end of the season, so congratulations to all of them.
Such a good summer. Um, okay, Bill, so.
I have two land, three hundred, thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars of bills presented for approval for payment. Uh, my highlights include a payment to the AUL Health Benefit Trust Fund and a special paid fund. Uh, that is the first of our four payments for our early retirees, so they can draw on those for either distributions or healthcare. Uh, there's a payment to SHI International for two hundred ninety-five thousand, one hundred fifty-four dollars for student chrome books. And a payment to McGraw Hill for a hundred and seventy-one, three hundred and eighty-five dollars for our math curriculum for five years. Thank you.
Looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve bills as presented.
So, if they're moving seconded to pay the bills, does anyone else have any questions for Jill? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Jill. Okay, the old business, no community reports, no reports, old business, the special education instructional service delivery.
So this, I brought it to the board of May, I think. Um, it's just, I've got to update it every five years. It was pretty much the same. I just changed how we use the case load, so I think it's time for everybody to reflect on it and bring it back for approval.
Okay, looking for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the social education instructional, uh, service delivery.
Hi.
Second.
Period. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve that.
Got it.
Say that. Uh, anybody have any questions for Heather? Thank you for doing that, Heather. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, new business, the propane bid.
All right, Eric was not able to be here tonight, but your pack is a contract with River Valley Co-op again this year. His second year in a row, uh, working with them at a dollar twenty-nine per gallon. Uh, plus you get a rebate, so it's actually less than that. And as long as the federal rebate sits in there, it's, I mean, I think we pay like fifty-five cents a gallon in the annual pay. It is, it is a really good deal, so recommending to approve River Valley as our provider.
Okay.
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve River Valley as our propane bid, uh, for our buses. Uh, anybody have any questions or comments?
Is this the, um, kind of volume that we use in the past year?
It's based on that, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? Yeah, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, student built home.
Okay, thank you. Uh, two bids for approval, please. Uh, Quinn Electric, uh, for the electrical for the student home. We have a bid amount of thirteen thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. They, uh, we have a four thousand dollar discount for the total price, nine thousand, five hundred and forty dollars for the electrical for student home. And then garage doors, um, rain or door, uh, we have a bid for five thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars with a one thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollar discount for an outdoor price of four thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. So, that's our two of its, what we want to present today.
Thank you for getting us this house today.
No problem.
Thanks, Dave.
Uh, okay, so looking for, um, uh, motion for the Quinn Electric bid?
Motion to approve the Quinn Electric bid for the student built home.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Quinn Electric for the student built home. Any questions for Mr. Lee? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, the rain or door.
I moved to approve the rain door for the student built home for the twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six year.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to pass, uh, rain or door, to accept rain or door as the student built home, um, bid. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Maybe, oh.
I'm gonna stick around a little longer.
Okay.
If you have any more questions.
My question, great.
Sure, no problem.
How many people active are dead on their electric?
How many down the electric and the, uh, work it up for you?
Hey, you were, I think I last time shared that your spreads.
Yes, you shared your spread.
Yeah, we did. I already did.
Oh, you did.
Oh, you did.
So, we didn't see them.
You got them. No worries at all.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are you, uh, just one question, are you?
Sure.
I know last year when you went to bid, your desire was for us to actually learn and be doing some of the work that they did. I don't think they did it previous years, are you happy with? What happened this past year?
As far as the amount of work, what the students did?
Yeah.
I think it's a good, uh, I think it's a good balance between staying on schedule at home and then getting as much experience as we can at the same time. When you feel a little bit pressured to get stuff done, um, what we tended to do was partner students that are interested in those trades and really focused on them. So, students that thought about being electrician, we got those, partnered with them. And then if you want to be a plumber, we really focused on that. So, we're kinda trying to meet the needs of some students and then there's kind of general students that weren't quite sure yet. Um, it's always a balancing act. You know what I just talked about? We want to give the students as much, uh, experience as we can, so. Um, looking forward, we're looking for a little bit more of the land, the Lancer Run, which is probably gonna be a little bit simpler at home, which hopefully get our kids a little bit more, uh, hands-on experience. Uh, we're also pretty confident in our internships that will provide students on Friday early. They're not, uh, at the home on Fridays, so our internship fair will be coming up in, uh, I believe next week, and we're gonna get students, uh, working out the job sites that they're interested in. So, they already interviewed once for the end of the year, just to get a feel for what they want to do. And then next week, we'll start placing those kids on Friday, just to get them more experience if they lack some at student home.
Cool, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Okay, on to the Lancer Run subdivision.
Yes, uh, I leave, uh, Mark Rich down there. I think we'll just go today to give the background. These kids came in at eleven, so I was really anticipating pulling it off, uh, if you give you guys more time. Um, the reason I put it on there is because if you look at the sheet, the bid we have, uh, to work with the local company is an extremely good bid. Uh, it matches well with some other jobs they have going on. Is the reason it's so good, because they will have Phil coming from another job that they need a place to take it, and we need Phil. And so I think there's some of that. The church has become a major nuisance for us with kids, uh, breaking into it, uh, on a regular basis. Getting rid of that church sometimes to totally speed to want to try to get this going. Uh, so I put down, you know, recommending that we approve the bid, uh, five hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and four dollars to develop the Lancer Run. It would be charged to the student, uh, student construction fund, which has, uh, plenty of money to do it. It will though make this year, if we pay that, not by the time the house sells, right, they're gonna, just like we had before, like last year. There's, uh, no money, if any money, we're really within the account, borrowing from ourselves to pay back when the fall's through. Now, that may never happen, because the reason I put the rest of the stuff in there for you to, to think about, the total development cost, when we think about the land we purchased, which we purchased out of Pebble. Um, you still gotta think about that in your total cost. So, it's about nine hundred and three thousand will be invested in there. If we do the current overlay, uh, development overlay, that's sixteen homes, three fourplexes, our four, it's about fifty-eight thousand dollars a lot. We can't get a lot anywhere right now for fifty-eight thousand. That's a really good deal. So, we're paying with, as soon as we sell or how we do the fourplexes, that's what'll get our development cost back, and could be fairly quickly. Uh, so we would never run into that where this, the student, student built home account is really, boy, you're selling this house, we need to get some cash back in there. Uh, if we would decide though to say, let's, let's get rid of one of the fourplexes, let's go to six homes for the student built, that's six years worth of building. We would need to go back to the city, but we eliminate the one fourplex that had two homes, but then your cost will up to six, about sixty-six thousand, five hundred per lot, which is still less than anything else we can, we can purchase. And in seven years?
Yeah.
It'll be significantly less than anything we can purchase if we continue to see valuations go up. And so, um, if we were to, right now, I just, we need approval. I'm looking for approval to say, let's start developing it. I would want us to work with the committee that helps, uh, provide advice, saying, do we stick with our current overlay and continue and just do the four and do that, or do we go six?
Who's the committee, Joe?
What's that?
Who's the committee, Joe?
It's, I'm. On behalf of the chair, that's our construction advisory committee. Uh, we got various, um, representation on that committee, a lot of business leaders in the community. Uh, some education parts from Eastern Ohio Community College, quite a few teachers are there, uh, retired individuals, so just kind of broad spectrum of people just to help us out with that, so. We're looking probably, probably September, late September, mid-September committee, as a committee, and we've kind of already discussed it, but it is on.
I would bring it back to you too, but I, I like that committee exists for a reason. I think that's a really good thing for them to say, well, would you guys recommend? Me, I love seeing six years, right, I love to see us build six homes over there. Uh, we know that the backend of the neighbors don't want those fourplexes in the bag, but that's the lot size forum. That's where we really save on development cost by building them there, and they'll still be nice and beautiful looking. Um, but right now, what we know is you can see the bids, and that bid is, is probably a bit less than the second one, and it just made it about seven fifty, somewhere in that range, but of course you have one as high as one point four million. Wow, so.
Yeah, you saw that, I mean, comparing, you said it's because they're bringing in Joe.
I don't know why they are. I just know one thing they said today when we called them, because we wanted to check. Anytime you have a really low bid, you want to check. He just said, hey, you know, one of the things is we have some other going on, and sooner we know we have Phil that we can, that we're gonna have to get rid of anyway, that helps this project, because you gotta bring Phil into this project. That's the only, they didn't say that's why there's, well, they're, they're on a long road. I think they want to help this program. They did a long.
Phil could get some more than three hundred thousand.
Yeah, could be. It could be. I, 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 I mean, that, I, that's just assumption I was making, just based on the conversation.
He just took one though, and in the past, we knew this, and then they start count, incurring costs that others put in there, but.
Um, well, we, that's why we called today to check on that, just to make sure, just to make sure that, hey, are you sure this is, you know, you're bidding it out? Yes, yeah, we were thinking that we had our website, well, and they actually had a bid bond. You can see that's a couple of, three of the companies, they even provide some bid bond, five percent. And so like, uh, that nine thousand, what the bid bond costs, they have bid bond for, but we need bid bonds in case they, they come back and they don't perform, then we have a bond, we can go again.
Right, okay.
What's that second column, yes or?
Is whether they met all the requirements. And a no means there was no bid bond, so three of them, and the documentation they gave us today didn't have a bid bond, but again, not only did they meet all of it, they were also significantly lower than everybody else.
The one that announced didn't have the bond, didn't it?
For that.
The one that was the most didn't have your.
Yes, correct, correct, yeah, yeah. It's a great bid, it's a great project, you know, we sit in the position to get this done.
So, you're looking for approval of the lowest bid?
Yep.
Okay.
Joe, one question, uh, so when you said the nine hundred thousand, because this will be five hundred and twenty-two, we paid, what, five hundred or?
Paid five hundred, we took.
Three hundred and thirty-eight of that five hundred is allocated to this project. The other forty percentage was allocated to Fifth Street Home, which we've already sold. So, we only allocated, uh, three thirty-eight.
So, total after that, what we pay versus what this is gonna cost us, about eight, right?
It might be nine, because there's other residual costs that go along with it, do you know what I mean?
Engineering fees, due to the design of that thing. Um, remember, we've already paid the thirty-two, and we've already paid, uh, for the land. So, I'm only asking for the contract, not the nine thirty, because we've already committed, we've already bought the land. But, when we go to sell the lots for the fourplexes, you gotta contribute all of our expenses into that. That's why I put that in for you.
Make a motion to approve the Idris, uh, Lancer Run bid.
Second. Okay, good move and second to approve the lowest bid from Idris' work for our Lancer Run proposal. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Question on, um, schedule, kind of a scope for work, have, have clear picture?
Yep.
In my mind of what will happen and what, you think the timeline.
Time line. So, we put in, uh, September first into the spring, so to be done by the spring, so next year, if you determine, I think we will be able to build a house there next year. Now, that is, if we decide to go to, uh, one less fourplex, we have to go through the city process, both zoning and, uh, city council. Now, it isn't zoning changing, it's zone for us to build, so we can start building it, but we don't want to put the fourplex without the two houses, we need their permission to do it, which I've been told should be an issue, because we're really not changing anything, other than it's a, it's a two buildings versus the one big building. And so that, but that could delay, just, you know, their process takes a while, but it shouldn't be an issue. It isn't like we did last time where we had to do zoning, have all the meetings, the neighbors. We still may have neighbors come out, just because those four, they want this, they wanted to see those fourplexes moved off of the backside, the west side to the north side, and it just doesn't work. That's not the way those lots are laid out, so.
Could the committee decide that we don't want any fourplexes and just all house?
We can't, we can't build, uh, sprange home on those back, it's too narrow. We have to go two stories. And we are, right now, with our current instructor and our current plan, we don't like two stories because of the liability with our kids.
Right.
Um, and that's why we need to develop our developments.
So, would you expect like this, like all season, it would be more of a tear down and we, uh?
Infrastructure?
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
You're asking what, what it's gonna look like as far as their project, they, that they're roofing?
No, the, just the, uh, starting the work and getting it done. I'm, my concern is you disrupt the surface of, you know, the soil, and you might have all sorts of things.
Like delays and that thing?
Over the winter and the spring and runoff, and I, you know, who knows, depending on where the dirt is and they got Phil, and that's my concern.
What happens if we're behind Phil and can't?
We piss a bunch of people off with it.
It would have to, because that's a major pollute area, so they would have to put down those barriers for any runoff, uh, to do it. I would love to see, I, I understand the problem. You could, the church out create a big hole in there for every rainstorm or flooding the neighbors through there, and we'll, we'll have to work with them on that to do it. Again, the church right now is a, is an issue.
Yeah, I get that, yeah.
And, uh, but we need, also need to be very conscious about runoff, and, and again, my guess is, I don't know where, I'm not an expert in that area, we're gonna see a lot of piles of dirt come in that obviously that causes some runoff too, and we have to be very conscious about how that runs down through that over between the two homes, and that makes it down to our property on the ground.
Just wanna make sure we're.
I would imagine that they would probably put those barriers up.
Yeah, and I think, uh, prior to, I think we have to have the D R plan. So, solar origin plan, that'd be all part of it, you know? This allows us to start working on all of that, yep.
I mean, I, I just will comment that this does allow us a, a great opportunity to educate and give experience to a lot of students that says so for a lot of future success with lots that at times were, were hard to come by and expensive in that realm. But by, by having six years, seven years of both lots, this, oh, we'd be, it's a little pressure to find that, that apartment lot every year, so. That's kind of a, a big purpose of this, and, you know, we're excited, and it's, it's gonna impact a lot of students too. I mean, there's a number of money in, you know, infrastructure, but students are in the impact, and so.
These are gonna be a little bit smaller homes?
Yes.
What if the cost of the two homes, the major?
Um, I, it's hard for me to answer that right now. I'd probably have to.
You'd have to see how one goes.
I'd have to think about that a little bit, and, um, you know.
There's a solid plan between him, four and then after.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'd have to think about it a little bit. Yeah.
It's expensive as is, I guess. I, I want to see six years for a building.
I think they're holding money, come on.
Yeah, money wise, you're running.
I also think you would wanna have, make sure it's quality and not just quickness, and I think if people saw two homes, who would have the ones? They would be concerned about the quality of the student built homes.
My, I'm, I'm excited, because I think it takes a little bit of pressure on our students that maybe they could send all of them one time doing some of the designs, you know? And I feel like we're, you know, we are under a crush to get things done. I mean, we kind of, at the end of the year, are really pushing to have them to, to finish them, to make it look good and presentable, and, uh, you know, we're, we, uh, last fall, we already went to the Eldritch Regard, we've kind of got some ideas on the type of home we want to design, and it's a lot sized regard, we're excited about. Both lot classes look very nice, the design, and then the, the great design that we're gonna have, the wood design, and everything here, so.
And we need to think about, and this is getting out of my expertise too, is what's the covenants for that? You know, we know we do not want, uh, any developer, has to be a home owner, right, we, you know, let's make them buy a fourplex and make apartments, that's not what this is designed for, it's not. And it, and we, yeah, and we do that too. That's what they were worried about, is will we keep them from becoming apartments? That's not what these are, these are homes. And, but you gotta write that in there, probably somebody could buy it and, and then make it rental property.
Sure.
And so, we'll have to.
How do you plan that? Do you even have a homeowners association?
Well, you'd have to, that's what I'm saying, we need a homeowners association sometime. I, that's the part we got, that's why we've always had, I work with diamond builders on the development, you know? I assume a quadplex has to have something, because a roof is gotta be almost like a condo association. Somebody paying into a fee because of the type of roof, I, uh, so, I'm not replacing it, it's legal or mine, so you gotta have some, some of that anyway, yeah.
So, as it stands now, my proposal is three fourplexes, how many homes?
Four, four, yep.
Two on each side?
It's two, three, and one. So, you got, uh, so if I'm coming in, you know, we got the house we sold in fourplex behind the apartment building. You drive up, and then we would have, past the house we built, there would be three homes, fourplexes and one, a retention bond and then one more.
And at this point, we're going to definit, we're definitely wanting to build the houses, but we don't know yet about the fourplexes.
The fourplexes, yes, that, that, that has come back to you, how, how that would look like, uh, we, we won't work on it. This is just now, you know what the price is. Now, we can start putting in things, are we, you know? I, I don't even want to venture to guess what the partnership, or are we just selling the land for the fourplexes yet?
Good question.
I always thought it was gonna be so much that we weren't gonna be able to prove that we need a developer to sit a table at this cost, and when we sit financially, we, we're on developer now. We don't need a developer necessarily sitting at a table to get the roof put in, the utilities put in. We still need somebody to build fourplexes, if we're not, we're not in the business of doing that.
Chief, there might be somebody out there that sees, sees that for the cost, be able to, I'm gonna hold both of these, there's somebody selling this town.
Yep, exactly, yeah, yeah.
Do you want to put in a little spark, like a violence and stuff?
Right, and we have a design forum, you know, we were working with diamond builders, helped us get to this point, so. Uh, now, we could not, this part of where you said you have to bid out, the development part could be different. So, we'll see. That part, we still have to work, it's just now that we know the number, which is, you know, at the current, uh, design, fifteen thousand lot, it's a great deal for us.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Idris Works for our Lancer Run subdivision, uh, infrastructure bid. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. Um, I A S B legislative.
I put this on there, I really haven't seen anything. Normally, they've asked us to get it ahead of time, I'm sure it's out there. I just wanted us to start our discussion, uh, in case people had something. I'll frame it out at meetings a lot. Uh, what I was thinking about it, uh, you know, priorities, obviously, that's, that's S A. Um, property tax is going to be a major conversation, and for me, it was property tax, not losing local control. Because the number of the bills last year would have used a major property tax, it would have some, uh, uh, major concerns on, oh, how would it impact us? Not just our, our tax owner, but what, what control do you as a board lose in either not being able to tax, not letting the voters bill, that's pretty bad, and so I would hope local control, as we think about property tax or any bill, is, are we retaining local control? So, I just throw out for a conversation, so we can hear as the time comes up, of what people are thinking about for legislative, uh, agenda items for this year. And maybe you know some more that you've been at the meetings.
Well, I'm actually going to go to Moyn tomorrow, uh, and meet with the Legislative Review Committee, and they'll be putting together their priorities for school board members, for the delegate assembly. And they've got basically the same list they had last year, right now.
I would say with that too, it's not gonna be a whole lot, you know, it's gonna be.
As I say, as I say, preschool, equity, and funding, those would probably be on the list, um, mental health.
Education still.
Transportation, that'd be, yeah, and they added to it again this year, uh, for that. Uh, but the property tax, we know is be targeted, that is their goal, uh, government rentals will pass that property tax bill this session. And so, um, I think they're working on outside of session, although I haven't heard of a lot about it. There were a couple of things that came out that, that I think we have to watch is, uh, um, uh, the Doge, Iowa, uh, Doge, they, they talked about I P R S. I P R S doesn't cost the, the budget of the state of Iowa in any way, because it costs school districts and counties and cities, it's paying their share. And, uh, and of course, the employees are share, so when they say it, it was a money savings, it's not necessarily a money savings to me. When you think about, one of the reasons public pensions went in years and years ago was to attract people to work in the public sector. It's still one of the main reasons why we have a defined debt, because our salary is still for teachers and people, it's still behind the public sector, and so, or the private sector. So, this is a way to incentivize, but we can't forget that. And we can't say it's estate savings, because it's not estate savings. It's, to me, it would be more like, we don't have it, so why should public employees have it? And so, I think we gotta be careful about that one. Uh, Taxpayer Alliance put out is no tax dollars in lobbying. You know, and that would be technically school board association is public tax dollars, because it's our memberships, and hey, S A I, you know, is that. But I go to the Capitol and talk, is that considered lobbying? It's almost like, let's get the voice of the public sector out of the Capitol, so they don't hear that side of it. And so I think we, again, that's a loss of voice, it's a loss of local control, and that's how I would have, you know, think about those things that just came out a couple weeks. There seemed like there was a third one too, that I can't remember what it was. Those do stick out in my head, it's like, ooh, that seems, you know?
Yeah, so we really need to keep out those priorities.
And I think for the other board members, just for I P R S, every two years, there is a committee that actually sits down with the chair of I P R S, as well as House and Senate committee members, and the financial people, and they see, they go through it and find out, is it display, uh, sound? And there has been talk, in fact, we did it, I think, one time, that we raised the contributions point five percent a one year to make certain that it would be sustainable, and then there was talk about doing a full year, or two years, point five percent. But it would be more than, debate comes in. But it would be more than, debate come in, is it the teacher that pays the additional, or is it the school? So there is a committee that actually takes a look at that to make certain that it is physically sound. And they show you the return on their investments and so forth, and they don't do a lot of risk.
I did, yeah, I went to the I P ers, uh, at S A I, they're they're ninety-five percent funded, because the market's done so well, they've done so well, it is now projected sometime in the two thousand thirties, uh, I P ers will be a hundred percent funded, meaning they won't even have to set money aside for unfunded liability anymore. It is, less than a few states in the nation, uh, are as well funded in their pension system, so it isn't, we're we're not, we're not Illinois twenty-five percent funded, right? The state of Illinois has to kick money in every year to keep their pension system, like, that's not Iowa. And so, um, you know, and we have, our benefits aren't as, aren't as good as some other states, you don't get a raise in I P, you retire. Bad amount, bad amount, that's it, that's all you get. Where I've been in Wisconsin system, uh, just over a year and a half, I've had two raises. Because the market does well, now I could lose money down back to my original amount that I raised. Illinois has, I think, uh.
They lost their thirteen, I mean, many years ago, they used to get thirteen jobs.
Yeah, Illinois has, but, uh, you know, Cobra, uh, they have, I mean, they they have an unfortunate system, what they have.
Well, they actually have a system without. Yeah, the teacher, they they have computer, their old system is unaffordable, their new system is not very good, so.
Anyway, just so, I P ers will be a a discussion again this session, yep.
Okay, thank you. So we will definitely keep those conversations going. Okay, now to the superintendent's reports.
Yeah, um, can I just say on that one, just on, like, if you do have something that comes up, uh, either myself or Frank, because Frank has been down there a lot now, uh, um, and, uh, get put forth, and eventually we'll have to fill out our legislative priorities and send them to him too, so, just be thinking about it. The school board mentioned, I know it seems weird, he's talking about it now, November twentieth and twenty-first, they already have a sign up available.
Isn't that Thursday and Friday?
Uh, it should be.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've already got.
Wednesday, Thursday.
But it should be the nineteen and twenty.
Yeah, it should be the nineteen, twenty.
No, it's nineteen, twenty, maybe Wednesday, Thursday, it's Wednesday, Thursday, that hasn't changed, yeah, yeah. So let Trina know, we'll always wanna, we wanna put the rooms, she probably already has it booked, if not, she'll buy one tomorrow.
Probably already on it.
No.
Um, so, uh, yeah, and I know it's weird, because it's right after the, uh, the American, uh, born elections, but it is what it is.
Our name person, but people won't even swerve in.
Yeah, we, they still let them go though, if they've elected. The start of the school year, uh, Wednesday is the one fif, one fifteen, I say one o'clock, there's snacks and stuff, so if you wanna come between twelve and one, just to chat with the employees, first Central State Bank has snacks and drinks, uh, for our employees between twelve and one, and then we'll get started, one fifteen mark, we'll be there. Uh, uh, we'll do that part, and we'll speak, we don't have a lot of training, we'll recognize, most of us recognizing our new employees in our five, ten year.
That's Wednesday?
It's Wednesday, at one, it's in the afternoon. So, so what happens is, is tomorrow is our first, first day of in-service, first day back, contract wise, it's a full workday for our teachers, so that's all that they have. Wednesday morning is our building time, district time, uh, afternoon, then Thursday is professional development, and then Friday is prof, well, Thursday morning is professional development. We had something new this year, we call collaboration time on Thursday afternoon. We expect all of our, uh, special I D L L, any health plans, any student who has a special plan of some type, we want the teachers not just saying, here, read this, go collaborate, let them know Joe has seizures and you need to know this, Joe has N I P, you need to know this. And so we built it with that extra day, we built that time in, because the last thing we like to hear is somebody say, well, I didn't know they had that plan, whatever, that plan might be a month into school. And so that, with the extra day, we go at that time in there. Uh, and then Friday is, uh, for math teachers, it's it's math pretty much all day, and then everybody else has professional development within those area, in their own areas. And so that's how this week is going, I would say, a week from, today, all the kids are back, so.
Yeah.
Um.
And we had the, the new teacher breakfast, too.
It was, yes, yeah, very good, yeah. Uh, school board elections, so the dates, uh, are included in the packet, the filing can begin on the twenty-fifth, uh, um, ends on the eighteenth, need at least fifty signatures. School Board Association has a phenomenal part of their website for anybody who's concerned running or current people, that has training things, it has all the information you really need to find. Um, I also, if anybody runs and we know they're running, take out papers, I will do an orientation, uh, with them. There's somewhere with the school board has on there, just what you're getting in here, is, uh, give you some back, give, give anybody background information. And so, uh, like, that is coming up quicker for that, uh, for that, so. For that, we're looking at a great start to the year. Project wise, I probably could put this down there, the asphalt, uh, over on Fifth Street went in, uh, for the whole park today, there's another area they have to do. It was really good to see that get done, uh, stadium, they're just still finishing up a few little things that were used in the locker room already, um.
What about?
What's that?
Sidewalk?
Sidewalk was already moved, so that's done, yeah, our part was done. We, I think, I think our contractor comes back in, Katie, and will smooth out the dirt between, implant grass between the asphalt and the sidewalk.
So they put any type of curb in or?
What you see is what you see, it'll go up to a grass area. Remember, it's probably only good for five to ten years, we're gonna tear out that whole thing and redo it, and then they'll wind that to cement with curb and everything. So this is that temporary fix until it's time to replace that entire road, which is within a decade, so. Uh, but yeah, it's nice to see that get done. Our big projects are pretty much done out at, uh, John Glenn and Allen Shepherd. It's really different when you go to Allen Shepherd, now you have a hallway where no hallway existed, and you have basically a library where it used to be just wide open, that looks really nice.
What about First Street though?
First Street, you know, it shouldn't take them too long, we're anticipating it's gonna take kids longer to get to and from, uh, the Innovation Center until it's done, but they've already, they're ready. I'm not sure if the weather holds up, they put the one layered out, and they put second, and then they'll be done, it's not a long, long project.
Somebody called me about that and, um, safety.
It's not the best timing, but it'll.
It's typical, they're adjusting schedules up.
Yeah, we adjusted schedules up, and we'll adjust when we have to, but it should be done within the first week of school, in fact, I thought, I thought if it wouldn't rain so much, they might have already been done by next Monday, but this kind of weather does not help us, uh, get those kind of projects done, but we should be okay. We just have to have to go all the way around, around, uh, the one accident, and then get back to the regional innovation center part of it, so.
Wrestling?
Uh, wrestling, we're still waiting on, we actually, uh, tomorrow, or was, I think tomorrow, we have a company, a guy that I saw at the S A I convention, that that, uh, they're not really a roofing company, but they're roofing experts, so they're gonna come in and give us a second opinion and take a look at it. Uh, he's the one who told me, we're, see, roofs, put a notch of a roof right over that, really, it's gonna give you two roofs that they, but he's gonna come and actually look at it and tell us. We're waiting for them to decide, okay, well, what did, we put a lot of money, we're under warranty, you're supposed to get this fixed, well, if you're gonna put a roof, what is our credit for all the money you spent so far, so we're looking, that's what they're looking into, they are now recommending we should put a new roof on. But I would hope they could put a new roof on without turning the old one off. If it's true that weight wide, it can do it, because just putting, going that a little bit, so.
It's good here.
Yeah.
But somebody that likes painting solar on?
Uh, that one's not leaking.
Oh, okay.
No, it's just the big, yeah, the little one's okay.
Cause I saw that solar.
Yeah, no, the the solar kinda gives us a center roof already on, for majority of that one. Uh, but that, the only other thing I, I'm sorry, I'm adding stuff, is we did get, uh, and I put it in my update, we did get, uh, the city's solar amount they give us, fifty-one years, I would never invest four million dollars, I'd take fifty-one years to pay off. Now, that doesn't include the rebate we would get, so we could shorten it by thirty percent, but to me, anything over fifteen years, you should question. Paying over twenty years, when they say twenty to twenty-five, thirty years, it's all about solar panel, we never pay long. And so it doesn't look like it, but I'm still waiting to hear from our company, Acme, to say, and I'm sure they're gonna tell us, yeah, this isn't worth it, and then we know long row, we're done with solar then.
Okay.
Uh, until, unless either, either Eldridge would ever sell out or want to align or, 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 long row, or, then we would go back, because now they have to do the reimbursement, that makes it worth it. Or I lose the rebate by then too, who knows? I'll update you just as I hear from them. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, comments or first class on the board? Um, the fifty-year price per year was seven eighty. Um, I didn't know, I'm I'm not, didn't very good remember, Tom, you know, I was at the town, but he said that Jacob did a great job with the tour. I went to the Innovation Center, and they all happened at the end, you know, they just, so, I mean, a lot of them live here, but a lot of them just had, they've been watching it, they get North South Press going. He said this is just, there's just all that's actually about it.
Yeah, Paul Beers, he, uh, he won, who set it up through me, he said, uh, Jacob did a good job, and, uh, Andrew gave a tour, and thanks, but that's the, uh, I mean, the fortieth and thirty-fifth, did a tour of the high school on Friday night, so.
High school.
Yeah, we love to get to where it's in the alumni.
Yeah, I know, that was neat.
Anybody else have anything? I have one thing, so the Allen Shepherd construction, uh, redid the library, and there was a wall in the library that was dedicated to my son Jack, and I would just like to tell John Small, uh, District of White, thank you, he took such care to remove all of the items, including a giant mosaic piece of artwork. And I now have it in my house.
Oh, I'm sure where I'm going to put it at this point.
But he took such care and meant so much to us, so I just wanted to thank John.
I actually repaired a little piece that cracked, I couldn't even find it, but it was.
And he had posted, that's what I had carrying around here, he was just very.
Isn't there anywhere a definition of it?
Well, I think we're, I think because there have been, unfortunately, a a couple of kids out there at Allen Shepherd that we've lost, and I think there are going to be identical, um, plaques that would honor the kids, so that it's more equitable, and so we will definitely have something in there for Jack. But I'm gonna have this in my house, so I I wanted to thank John, he did a great job. Anybody else have anything?
Facilities meeting next Monday.
I I haven't looked at part, but I believe, we do have one coming up, and remember, just to prepare yourself, we'll go through a process, and so we're trying to prioritize the next five to ten years, is what's, you know, what are we looking at year one potentially, what are we looking at year two, year three, based off our list, uh, and so, uh, yeah, it'd be nice to get that down, it's really part of our strategic plan, one of the things that we need to do, uh, so yes, that's what that's for. Yep.
And I know I came into the policy meeting, and I overheard, I believe it was, what's the rental, out here for the brick? Uh, you know, because they're supposed to give liability and all that other stuff, and for outside groups that are not parents or community members, and I just, is that part of that, because I know I talked to you, do we have, what kind of rental do we have, and who actually can we contact? Or who does somebody contact if they wanna use us?
Yeah, right now, Josh, that's the answer is that, is that question. Now, people can go on our website and create themselves as a user and a request, right, they don't even have to go through any, one of us, they go through the electronic system. Generally, it's easier for us to do it for outside groups, uh, and we get that, as as we start using that facility this year, that's, you know, just some of those who, how much administration do we need out here, when do we need them out here? You know, and this year won't even be, next year should be the start of how that building really gets used, because until every district has it in their course catalog, not gaining a ton, now we have a twenty to forty outside kids taking courses there. That number should grow dramatically, and that, that's just something we're gonna have to, as a district, decide how we, how we staff that building, you know, things like that. But we, that's why that committee got together, we gotta know how we're, what are we charging for rad, and so that, that's why the policy is. Yep. It's nice to see used, once a group uses it, they wanna use it, they have.
Yeah, as long as they're, they're, we're recruiting the office. Students, it's a different story, but when it's community, we need to make sure that the cost is natural, or.
Yes.
They're okay to pay it or offset it.
It'll be outside?
And signage looks great, if you have been in the building.
Oh, yeah, graphics really set the building up, yeah, yeah, very nice.
We'll be doing tours probably soon with you.
Yes, yeah, I did, once we'll get started, yeah, yeah.
A motion to adjourn.
Okay. All of us in favor?
All right.
Close any sign, thank you.